I cannot hear anybody. Gosh darn it.
Oh, we were.
We can hear you.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, I can hear you now. Thank you.
All right, we're ready to start.
This is a recording. Okay, well, it is six o'clock on Thursday, November ninth, and I will call this city council work session to order. Before we get to our agenda, I wanted to just mention that Mayor Ryder is absent tonight, excused absence, and Councilmember Kunkle is joining us online. And with that, can you get a motion, please?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? See none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. And our first agenda item tonight is our 2024 federal and state legislative priorities agenda. Presenting is our Assistant City Manager, Shannon Kelly-Fulham.
Well, good evening, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. Annually, the city of Lacey establishes its federal and state priorities for the upcoming sessions. And what we are here to do tonight is to review some draft priorities that we put together for both the state and the federal levels. I'm joined here by Brian Enslo, our government affairs consultant. And Brian's gonna kind of drive the presentation and give some background on the upcoming session, review our drafted priorities. And then the plan is to get some feedback on them today and then return to the city council for adoption on December seventh. We also have tentatively scheduled a meeting with the legislators, the state legislators of second, twenty-second, and thirty-fifth district for December fourteenth, which is a work session. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Brian and let Brian take the presentation.
Please. Wow, thank you very much. Appreciate having an opportunity to speak for you today. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I defer to you and how you want to operate. But traditionally, it's been a little bit more conversational. I'm comfortable with you asking questions as we go slide through slide. But again, if we want to hold questions till the end.
Yeah, let's do what we've been doing. I think a lot of the councilors are familiar with all the things that we're.
Great.
Say all the things that we're gonna see, but keep our conversation as we have in the past.
Well, I will try to go through them pretty quickly, but feel free to slow me down or speed me up, however, whatever you desire. It's not this button right here.
It looks like you've engaged. Just turn that off and try again. You can, yes. Try it now.
There we go. All right. Well, yeah, I'm left-handed, so when you put amounts over here, who knows what's gonna happen sometimes. The, it's a short session coming up. As you know, Washington State's owned by a new cycle. So instead of one hundred and five days, we only have sixty days. It goes really quick. So there's, there's not a lot of time for new policy. Certainly not a lot of time to have a deliberative process on new policy. And what we see is kind of a lot of like second chances on the bills that didn't go through last year. So house bills that maybe passed the House but didn't pass the Senate and vice versa. They'll go back to their chambers and get reworked again. So I'll talk more about some of those, what those issues are. But generally, from a policy perspective, it's a lot of like, hey, things we talked about last year that maybe still need to be worked out about that. This slide says political risk-taking is limited. That's kind of mushy code word, but it's an election year coming up. It's a presidential year. You generally don't see hard votes, whether it's hard politically, whether it's hard fiscally, things like that. So some of the things that we'll talk about, there'll be a lot of effort from the communities that feel like they need more resources or they need this. But sometimes those are much more challenging in an election year coming up, especially when it's presidential. There's a lot of people running for other stuff in the legislature, which will just, this is more, just takes up oxygen, takes up capacity. Same with the redistricting. Should not impact the districts here. It's, it's not completely inconceivable. But for those of you that aren't aware, for level setting, the courts did throw out what the legislature had ultimately approved with respect to the fifteenth, which is kind of over in Yakima, on a violation of the Voting Rights Act. So they gotta figure that out. And so that's gonna, you know, when you move one piece of the map around, you gotta move some others. And again, it just takes up a lot of like time and, and, and politics and capacity. So I don't expect a lot of big things to happen this session. This is kind of the message again from me. The financial standpoint, we're doing all right. General fund dollars are still tracking. The Climate Commitment Act is up about a billion dollars. And that's a lot of money even for the state. And so just about every special interest group thinks that that ought to be dedicated towards them. So perhaps, perhaps from a city perspective, I would think that maybe for those that have local climate action plans, there should be a special pot of money put together to help us buy down those items. Or, or, you know, like, like, so everyone's gonna be looking at that. And, and also, they're gonna be looking at the line between what was, you know, gas tax dollars, eighteen amendment, what was considered road projects versus what, what was considered like multimodal and what, what climate commitment had been used in the transportation budget. That line's probably gonna get a little bit blurry and a little squishy. So, and so that ties into the, the transportation budget, the resources are actually okay, what it's cost, right? So, and that will play into some of the, some of our future slides, what we talk about when we talk about some of the policy around transportation. But resources are okay, but when a project goes up forty percent in a couple of years, then it doesn't really matter what you predicted from resources, right? It can't keep up with that. Here's some key dates. As I mentioned, it's, session's gonna start and it's almost gonna be over. And the reason why I put the revenue forecast is because that's the, that, you know, after the revenue forecast, the budgets start getting locked down. So when it comes to some of the things that we're gonna be talking about from our capital request and transportation request, we gotta be really ready to, ready to go the moment the session starts. There's the city action days for those of you who have participated in the past. We certainly appreciate your participation. There's about ten items, you know, within each of these broad headlines. Right? And, and I, I, I won't go into them, but if you, if any of you all have specific questions or specific issues kind of that fall within these headings, feel free to let me know. And I'd be happy to provide a little bit more context, but we're still gonna be a lot of energy around housing homelessness unhoused. Missing middle, of course, passed. And so that kind of big policy area has been kind of wrestled and put to bed. I think each side probably wishes it was either more or less. And so some of the conversation about what to do with areas within UGA, some of the issues around HOA. I think they're still there, but I don't necessarily think there's gonna be the political will to like move on them. So I wouldn't, I would expect there to be some conversation. Transit-oriented development, until we're a community that's big enough that is going to have true rapid transit, so like dedicated guidelines, pay, you know, before you get onto the bus, elevated platforms, things of that nature. It's one that we watch and we think about, but I'm not sure it will have direct implications. But we did have some comments from staff as there's bill drafts reviewing. So we are participating in the process and providing input process, but I didn't wanna flag that. And, you know, whole litany of other things within kind of that broader housing homelessness rate. You know, do we need, do we need additional resources, things like that? Lake and behavioral health. Everyone's like, we need a fix to the fix. And it really is, you know, we continue to think like, how do we, how do we, if we want to have a like treatment-centered approach to behavioral health, which is, which is the policy that has been put in place, then we need to have the behavioral health infrastructure put in place. And that, that's, that's from, all the way from the beginning, which is the individuals that encounter individuals in the street, whether it's our law enforcement, whether it's co-responders, whether it's first responders, whether it's navigators, however you wanna like talk about them, all the way to actually having bricks and mortar, like capacity for treatment, whether it's inpatient, whether it's outpatient, things. So more work to be done in there. A lot of conversation on public safety. There is an initiative that I think many of you are aware of that has some components to it around pursuits. The legislature will have to write, like wrestle with that. Do they, do they wanna do more on pursuits or do they wanna just put it to the voters? I don't know. I don't have a sense of like where they're at on that. I haven't, you know, not all of them have come together yet. And I've heard some input from here and some input from here, but I'm not hearing a clear message on that. Certainly from King County, some other counties, you know, the property tax cap is, when you combine one percent growth on your main source of revenue, when you, when you're a full thirty years into GMA and fully realized planning and you're wrestling with five and a half percent inflation this year, six, six and a half percent last year, it becomes more challenging. But certainly, as I mentioned, you know, we've been working, there's, local government has been working on that issue for quite some time. It hasn't happened yet. I'm not sure that this year is gonna be the year that happens. Climate Commitment Act, I think I mentioned it. The other piece I would just highlight is on the policy side. There will be a robust conversation around joining our market with the California and Montreal market, no Quebec. That market's like six times larger than ours. So just, just from economies of scale, it brings our cost of compliance down. So we're at that, you know, fifty, sixty dollar, you know, like cost of compliance for a metric ton, which roughly translates to cents on the pump. So if it's fifty dollars to comply, it's about fifty cents at the pump. But it's not exact math, but it's relative. And, and if we merge our markets, they think you can see ten to fifteen cent decrease at the pump. So it's, there is some policy implications there though, because when you join, you do have to have programs that are somewhat similar, not necessarily how you spend the money, but the way the program is actually implemented and enforced on the business, right? So, so it does have some policy implications as well. It's not just, we merge the money side of it, if that makes sense. And then for fun, we're gonna talk about AI and data protection. I don't think, you know, nothing's gonna happen, but can't imagine the legislature not talking about AI this year. Do we have it in their packet as the, I think you already said that.
Right.
So, so in your packet, you have a draft legislative agenda. There's actually eight items. The first slide here, I'm gonna focus on kind of the five most pressing for this session. And then as we go later in the presentation, I have the three others kind of broken out and talk about those as well. But for this session in particular, these are the items that we are looking at pursuing with some figures. The Emergency Operations Center is something that was on our agenda last year. We were successful in receiving support from our legislative delegation on, in the capital budget, but not on this issue. If you recall, we ended up pivoting and putting forward the transformer at the Regional Athletic Complex. We were successful in getting that. The main reason was just, we weren't gonna be ready. I think our new time estimate on, on the Emergency Operations Center is breaking ground about a year from now and then being ready, I don't know, nine months after that. So really cool that we've gotten this far and had, you know, like hiccups happen. In terms of hiccups, it's a pretty small one. But, but, so we will be, that is something that we have on our draft agenda, looking forward to. As you all know, nobody was really ready for the pandemic. But then you add some of the other things that have happened in this community, whether it's the microcell incident, closure of I five, things like that. From a facility standpoint and like a coordinated response standpoint, having this center will really help us out and really help out the citizens as we move forward. So.
So how does that, how's that work? Like if once we're, we're a hundred percent ready or, or once we're halfway through the bill or something like that, then we're funded half a million dollars for, for that effort? Or am I, am I missing how that works?
It is on a reimbursement basis. So, and, and I think it's actually on cost reimbursement, not, not encumbrance. So, so once the city has spent that amount of money, then the reimbursement will happen, provided that the legislature does provide some money, that it would be ready at the earliest and the start of, well, actually, it's a biennium. More likely than not, it'd be the start of the state fiscal year, which is July one. So, which would work for our, if you think about it, if we're not even breaking ground, tumbling air, plenty of time to get everything worked out with commerce and lead time to get it going, so.
And Deputy Mayor. Yeah, spend the money until we build.
Correct.
And Deputy Mayor, just gonna add, know what Brian was saying is that was some of the feedback we got, you know, we, for introducing this idea last year was it was just too early based on our timeline for construction. And that's why we're waiting for this year to come back with that request.
And then the other opportunity we're looking at is, is, is building on to the investment we've made at the Regional Athletic Complex with, with hoping to find some resources to replace the existing lights. There's over two hundred, they're, in addition to reaching the end of their kind of useful life, they're also not very energy efficient. So as we look at our climate resiliency and opportunities to improve energy efficiency within operations, this is a place that we think makes sense. And so that's on your list there for consideration as well.
Will that number take care of, how much, how much of that will it take care of?
A portion of it. And as part of what we've included in the packet is a kind of general breakdown of what the total costs of the project are. And so there certainly are going to be other opportunities that the city is going to be pursuing for funding.
Long-term funding to support housing. This is obviously really key. The state has made some commitments on the operating side. Those commitments are somewhat time limited, so they're not in perpetuity. You know, like last year's budget had a hundred and sixty million for emergency housing shelter. It also had sixty million for the encampment and like response and outreach. Those are spread over five years. Those are great things, but we're not looking, you know, in the short run horizon, right? We're looking at the long run horizon and, and finding a permanent solution as we move people out of encampments and hopefully transitioning from temporary housing to permanent supportive housing. So we would hate to, you know, kind of get the metaphorical rug pulled out from under us. So these are the things that we continue to work on. Last year, one of the big emphasis was the REIT bill that I alluded to before. That's not without problems this year in terms of, of political and, and again, for level setting. The last year, there was an additional third quarter or one quarter of one percent on the sale of homes that would have been dedicated to addressing these issues. We worked pretty diligently with the bill sponsor to ensure that the local resources could be used for the whole spectrum, so not just permanent supportive, because we, we know, right? When we're out there and someone needs a lifeboat, like we, we don't just come back and say, we need, you know, we're gonna, we, we, we start where we start and we help moving them to the, that process. And so transitional emergency shelters are part of that condition. Transitional housing is part of that. So anyhow. And then the other piece here in, you know, I like to give credit where credit's due. And, and I think you all know that Shannon is just incredible. But she's, I, you know, she's an incredible resource. And, and one of the things that she highlighted to me was like, Brian, have you, have you taken a look at what's on the list this year for the Defense Community Compatibility Account? And so that was in a, that was in, an account that was created by some of our hardworking and diligent community partners in the kind of like South Sound Military Partnership, where it's a fairly robust pot of money that was designed perhaps in mind with like more like planning, infrastructure, and making sure things. Like when you read a lot of the language, it didn't necessarily scream like early learning or childcare centers, but just so happens in last year's allocation, there was thirteen point six million to Crescent Elementary and thirteen point nine to Oak Harbor. So, so opportunity. So one of those things is, and, and we'll get, and I'll talk more about that opportunity later. But this is one of those things where we really wanna make sure that we work hard to ensure that this program that hasn't been around for that long is maintained and if possible, enhanced. So it's this one thing we wanna flag, because we believe that there's probably greater opportunities for the city Lacey and our community than maybe we had originally envisioned when the fund was created. That is a very astute question, yes. And so I think, I think, yeah, it's, as I mentioned, it's on one of our future slides. And, you know, like, but yes, that seems like a fit based on what was done this year. Whereas before, we would have not necessarily thought that was a fit. Yeah.
Councilmember, we are certainly evaluating that. And I think the important thing to make note of, and I know we're gonna be talking with David Hodges here just a second on the federal side, but that this particular fund, as it's currently created, does require that there's a federal component as well, and this acts as a match to that federal side. And so you'll see that we are interested also in a very similar program on the federal level, which is the Defense Communities Infrastructure Program, commonly referred to as DESEP. And so we are exploring that also for potential projects here in the city of Lacey. I do wanna just highlight too that the Defense Community Compatibility Account, you know, as Brian highlighted, was used for the elementary school in Oak Harbor, but we've also seen it used here in the South Sound to support JBLM, and that is one of the funds that is being used to purchase space in the Clear Zone.
So we went to the DESEP office two weeks ago to, you know, kind of petition, plead our case, explain what we're doing, why we're doing, and so on. So we, Rick and I got to sit with the head of DESEP, I guess you wanna call him?
Yep, Executive Director.
Executive Director of DESEP. And we discussed the Early Learning Center, our thoughts, plans, ideas, goals. He discussed with us some thoughts and ideas that he had. And we were, we had a pretty good takeaway on how to, what we need to do and how we need to do it. It won't be a cold call. I thought that was a pretty successful meeting.
So in the last item for this session is focused around transportation. I am very concerned, as I mentioned earlier, around what is assumed kind of in the transportation plan, what, what, what people think is happening when. We've already had to kind of fight to ensure that our I five project didn't slip too far into the future last session. And I think that's going to be a continued concern as some of the real fiscal pressures of cost estimation kind of hit the, like, like where the rubber meets the road, like literally. Like, I don't know if you all recall, there was an article, might not have caught your attention, but the, the four oh five, like one sixty seven connector was hundreds of millions of dollars out of bed from their original projection. And, and that's a story that's been repeated on, at, at kind of the same, you know, like scale factor, but like a, you know. Probably, I don't know, I'm looking who, you know, like, I remember when an interchange was only twenty million and, and it was forty and now it's, you know, and went, you know, went from forty to fifty overnight. So, so in every, you know, every interchange is ten million to fifteen million dollars out of bed. And so those kinds of things.
How long did that?
It's possible.
Is there, is there a cost estimate on the whole five to, to COVID dome thirty-year debacle?
There, there, there likely is. It's not in my notes, but, so I would have to get back to you, but.
Come in less than that.
Yes, I would hope so, but.
The ship of Thucydus is a rope.
Yeah, so.
The same rope.
It's true. It's true. There's always something different with like the sixteen. It has been, yeah. So, so, you know, we're very appreciative of the work our legislative delegation has done on this. They, of course, have been front and center on this issue and continue to expect that. But, but they'll, they'll have to still hear from us, and that's just part of the work. We also, you know, appreciate and support the work that's being done in Yelm with the Roundabout at five oh seven. And one of the things is the kind of the use of practical solutions and design. And we think that's a model that makes sense and how do you, and, and certainly support that. And then the last item on this list is something that, you know, we've, we've talked about. We think there's some opportunity there. And hopefully we can work with our regional partners to think about that is, is being able to use the shoulder between Sutter Kenny and Henderson Boulevard on southbound I five. So again, trying to think about how we, as we move through one part of the corridor, how we continue to free up capacity in other parts. So that is kind of the concluding on kind of like twenty twenty-four focus. These are some of the other things that we've identified is kind of like, you know, like starting the conversation with our legislature. Of course, if opportunities arise, we're gonna jump on it. But sometimes laying that early ground where we've already kind of hit on the childcare and early learning access center, we know that's really important. We've identified one potential funding source. We're gonna continue to look for more, but, but that is on our list of kind of like future projects. The Joint Animal Service, the regional facility. The, the facility they're operating in is kind of like a repurposed warehouse since from nineteen ninety-six.
Can we, before we continue, can we bring Councilmember Kunkle on screen if, if, if available? Because just in case he has a question, I don't wanna miss his raised hand.
So Councilmember Kunkle would, needs to turn on the camera.
Okay, and then he'll just have a.
Great, thank you. Warehouse from nineteen ninety-six. It's, it's, my understanding was there was a regional study, and I don't know if specifically on the building envelope, but it's, I believe it's needed repair. And even if it, so even if it was repaired, would it still fit kind of the form and function? So there is a, a, a hope to move forward with a new facility. I think the price tag on that is in the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five million dollars. So again, laying the groundwork of what are some of the pots of money that might be available? How do we work together? You know, this, it's always, you know, it's a, it's, it's, you know, you always aim for kind of a one-third, one-third, one-third local, one-third state. I don't know if this one would be where the other one-third, because this would probably be federal. But so my math didn't work on that one. I apologize, but I think you're getting this.
The state would work better.
Yeah. Yeah, listen for that.
Three thirds even better. I like the, I like that taken from the record and just replaced with the term created, right? We look for creative funding on as many partners as possible.
And then a note on the Thurston County Regional Basic Law Enforcement Academies and Training Centers. A year, so over a year ago, Governor Easley was maybe up in Skagit, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too sidetracked, but, but, but a year ago, the governor, the governor, Governor Easley was the plan of, of, of building, funding and building like regional satellites for training academies. One of the issues with Burian is it's really disruptive. So you actually, you know, you kind of have to like give up your life and live in dorms. And, and in addition to, in addition to just that being a barrier for, you know, I'm a single parent, right? Like I, you know, like what would I, how would my kids get to school while I was there? And so barrier from certain people from applying. It's also difficult because, you know, you have to backfill your labor force and all those things. So, so, and, and you're also, you know, maybe, so, so, so last year, the first kind of phase of that was funded. There is a, there is money and resources for a regional training academy in Pasco. They in fact have just graduated their first class. They were up and running before. They were kind of like the model on how this was built that, because they had an existing facility in the Tri-Cities area, had already put a million dollars in capital improvement in it. So they were just kind of ready to go. They just needed to find, they had, they had the space, the space was upgraded. They just needed the instructors and like go ahead to, to the, to the authority to kind of do that. One was funded in Skagit, one was funded in Clark. Those two are further behind, but so looking forward, we think it makes sense to have a regional academy here as well. Burian is not as close as it used to be. And it would be able to sort of, not just Thurston County, but it would Lewis and, and, you know, somewhere, somewhere halfway in between Clark, individuals and Tallets are, they're gonna go south or they're gonna go north if there was one here. So it wouldn't, you know, we'd, we'd have it and, and also extending out to.
Southern Paris.
Yes, Grace Harbor. I was, I was right, right west is what I was thinking. So some, and, and Shelton, anyhow. But you could see we would have a larger catchment area than just Thurston County. So some and 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 Shelton, anyhow, but you could see we would have a larger catchment area than just Thurston County. So, uh, we think it makes sense. Um, the current other regional academies are funded at like two continuous classes, um, and I think that would make sense here as well, depending on need, so. Just wanted to bring that up. Not seeing any additional questions. Um, so that, that concludes kind of the portion where I want to share with your draft agenda. As as we've now mentioned three times, we should have in your packet. If you have any other questions that come up or concerns, um, please let me or Shannon know, and um we will work to address them or answer them appropriately. The other um, the other um kind of like piece of paper as pertains to this presentation as you have in your packet is twenty twenty four policy manual. If you recall, last year, this was kind of a new document that we um uh that again, your excellent staff, Shannon, like spearheaded, um. It, it really helps me. Um, I know that it also from a staff perspective, I think it helps focus kind of like on on as we think about missions and goals and specific policies, how they fit in those. Um, but what it is, is it's a fairly comprehensive document on a broad uh range of of topics, that kind of general principles and and um insights into kind of where the city's at on certain issues. And, you know, there's two thousand bills in front of the legislature in a short session, it's going to be the leftovers and five hundred new or something. And so it, you know, it kind of really helps me to just go, yep, nope, okay, I need more information, you know, and really triage it, if you will. Um. And and just, you know, quickly in examples of works, um, public records. I know first and foremost that the city of Lacey has a commitment to being open and transparent, that you value citizens' ability to question and get information in your government, and that is paramount. Um, um, uh, we know that we also are looking at ways to how to um ensure that um workflow is efficient, whether it's the the parallels between like um discovery requests versus public records requests, or also just the cost of of performing that and how we can appropriately do cost recovery in a in a digital environment. It's not just sheets of paper and making copies for people anymore. So, um, those are some things that are really helpful for me to just quickly understand without having to like ask you on every single piece of legislation that comes up. Um, there are some specific additions um in the policy manual. I see um um, see that the chairman has come on. Um, there are some specific um additions that I want to highlight here that you can take a look again if you have questions. Um, vehicle miles traveled, um. Um, it's going to be a really, a really interesting issue. I think we are closer to um um really needing to find a solution on how we think about transportation uh resources and thinking about the decline in gas tax as a viable source um moving forward. And just kind of thinking about gas tax being the tax, that the price you pay for consuming carbon and and road usage or vehicle mile being the price you pay for the impact that you put on the infrastructure. And and so uh we definitely need to ensure that um that the city's perspective and and any implications for our fleets and things of that nature and and also our citizens are reflected in those conversations, but um we're going to run out of money sooner than later on the transportation side and and um and it's going to get tangled up in a revenue conversation as well, which is a little bit unfortunate, because I think in in a in a world you could have at one time said uh, we can just do a one-for-one swap from impact to an individual's pocketbook, you think on, but now with the transportation revenues, transportation means so out of bed, if you're going to make a big policy change, you're probably also going to have a a revenue package or revenue component on that, so that's going to, I think it's going to make it harder to have that pure policy conversation on on road usage charge, but um and so, and and it's going to, it's it's something that you just can't implement overnight, whereas the gas tax, you can just say, well, now the gas is more on the price you whereas the infrastructure for road usage has to be thought out of and 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 put in place in a little bit more meaningful way. So, all good things, um.
So on the, on the electric, on the electrification portion that we, you know, are all doing, um and uh deciding on the the cost for kilowatt hours. Is there a possibility that as as we, you know, move away from fossil fuel, we start going towards electrification that, you know, we're going to see, you know, additional tax dollars in that on on those uh those units that we're we're saying that we, you know, we are passing through costs. We've talked about cost paths through, we've talked about, um, you know, adding a little additional on there to to supplement for what we've spent so far. Um, but we haven't talked about, um, you know, the 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 cost or the tax that could, you know, that we might see on the future on 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 those those units, on delivering those kilowatts.
So specifically, you're talking about like a rate conversation on what we charge for electricity and whether we factor in the cost of the.
Yeah, do you do you see a possibility that that some of this gas tax is going to shift to to that area?
Um. It's an excellent question. I don't think that's been answered. I see it more specifically on the um charge to the owner of the vehicles and at the and calculated based on the like, you know, you, like an odometer statement and and either self-reporting. Um, boy, people don't like the notion of doing the thing that you plug in and having the government GPS track you, right? Um, so that gets that gets controversial fast. Um, I obviously am agnostic, uh as your representation on this, unless I get clear direction from you all, but I just point that out as something that does create some headwinds, but um but um but having it as just, you know, what you charge households for their energy consumption, um and not not tying it directly to like, right, because my energy might bill might go up because I'm charging a Tesla, I don't know. Or it might go up because I just like, like really like hot showers or I, you know, ruin the dishwasher when it's not full. You you know what I mean? So so separating that out and tying it specifically to the road usage and the amount you drive um seems to be where they're going.
Insurance companies are all building it already. I mean, everyone, every, I don't know. Have the little things you're sticking in your car so that they can. Yes, and you put it in your car, right, and they give you a discount based on a bunch of different how you drive. They're they're tracking mileage and everything else. Look, I can look at the app on my phone and it shows me everywhere, it shows me exactly the roads I took, I mean, so there.
So before we move, before we move out of that section, um, there was a prevent liability expansion. I did, that that sounds like there's something there that I don't it sounds like there's more to that. How do we prevent liability expansion? Is that what we were talking about in our last work session?
It's really about opposing efforts to expand tort law liability, um and other remedies available under tort law. And if you turn to page five, we've got a really good description of kind of what the environment is right now, where we're seeing um multimillion dollar verdicts that go against, you know, cities and other organizations and governments. And, you know, we work through the WCI risk pool, and they work with other uh insurers to provide coverage beyond what they can provide. But what we're finding is, you know, as we see increased liability, um that a lot of those providers are not willing to take on those costs, and so um certainly the city is opposing any efforts to expand as as drafted currently, um, uh, tort law liability. And really, you know, encouraging, taking a look at what the system is right now and seeing if there could be any um uh, you know, ways that we can look at the system itself to reduce liability for the city.
That's kind of what we were talking about, uh, two works at our last work session with the um, I can't remember the 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 name of the attorney there.
With Jeff Myers.
Yeah.
And this is something again that um uh WCI is is supporting, and we are a member of that pool.
Because in that, in that conversation, we saw some some numbers about how really a very low uh number in terms of what we've had to pay on claims.
That was just for public records. Public records area, we we do pretty well, but I'm guessing that torts is not just public records.
Correct, it is a lot more than that.
Yeah.
I remember my first week on council, uh, I became part of a million dollar lawsuit for some guy's property over on Carpenter Road. Uh, we all were in that, but that was my first.
All my ones are road design, stormwater. Some of those other things.
Yep, yeah.
Anything where anyone feels that you did them wrong.
And so that is going to be one of our focuses, because I, number one on the list.
Well, this is just really highlighting what are additions to our manual, and that's, you know, again, um, the idea that we've got our our priorities. But as, you know, Brian mentioned, thousands of bills come up, and so certainly if something comes up related to this, this would provide Brian with some good direction on what we're looking to do, and could then help, you know, the city, you know, uh, sign in as opposed or um whatever their stance might be for that particular bill that comes up.
Before we leave our states, um, I want to move into federal. Uh, last night, the Thurston Regional Housing Council met, and we came up with our top three legislative priorities around housing. And this, I mean, I just got the copy of it this afternoon, but I think one of the worst, but um, I'd like to um appetite for living. If not incorporating some of this into ours, um, at least giving a copy to Brian as he's talking with legislators about this. But quickly, the top three priorities were to increase funding to meet the continued need for rent rent assistance for low-income renters in Thurston County. That is, you know, one of the most powerful things we can do is keep people housed who are already housed and keep them from falling out. In human sense, the second would be to provide long-term operational funds for programs established and paid for by the Governor's Right-of-Way Initiative, which li- aligns already with what's in there. And then two, number three would be to increase capital funding through the Housing Trust Fund for the development and preservation of affordable housing. So I think it aligns pretty well, and if you all would like copies of this, I can get it out to the whole group. And then
Yeah.
Perhaps we consider what, if any of this to incorporate in our packet and move on. Sorry about the timing, it was.
Yeah, and uh, Councilmember Fox, thank you for sending those in, and we just have an opportunity to review the top three legislative priorities. And as you pointed out, the second one fits in really well with one of the top priorities where we're asking for continued operational funding and then potential capital funding in the future for Maple Court and other state rights-of-way acquisitions. I would also say um number three, which is talking about um supporting Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we do in the policy manual, it's not on the priorities list, but in the policy manual have an entry um on quality affordable housing, where it does expressly state supporting um efforts, uh, including the Housing Trust Fund.
Yes.
I really think we're sending that in and I pass it on to Shannon, and she'll coordinate that with Brian.
Already done. We have made a pledge to, you know, do as much as we can with the former business and the city, and we are fortunate enough to have the governor come alongside, and the Right-of-Way Initiative come alongside right at the time we needed it. Um, some of these other things that were, you know, the the um dispute resolution center, some of the other things that we're that we're adding to 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 make sure that we are are following that mandate are are seemingly helpful so far. And I know that we'll be revisiting the the dispute resolution center uh deal at the beginning of the year, but um, I I I, you know, as as things come along and and we say, okay, well, we can have this to the homelessness issue, we can have this to the homelessness issue as long as the cost don't get up, you know, way crazy out of control, I mean, I'm all for it. Uh, because you're right, it's better to keep people housed, and I, and it seems as if, you know, yes, we got, I won't call it lucky on that. We got, we were prepared and we and we got the dollars that we needed, um, but that doesn't mean that we have, that we need to just stop and and relax and say, oh, we we got it taken care of, because we didn't.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Councilmembers, um, again, this will be coming back before you um um on December seventh. But before then, I just wanted to see if there was any other general feedback or items that um the council would like to discuss. I have heard um on the RHC, and we'll certainly make sure that that gets out in front of all of the council to take a look at and consider for additions moving forward.
I like the addition of the um land acknowledgement at the beginning of the packet. That was, I think that's also new this year, because we have a land acknowledgement that's been approved. And just the fact that the um, table of contents at the beginning is hyperlinked, so you can just go straight to the page that you want. That's cool. So, I thought that the development of this policy manual last year was really smart, because it just shortened the time it takes for us to get a response on a particular issue, given my phone's in the second session, so thank you for your work on this and refreshing it this year.
Even better.
I can't think of anything right off top, but if I, if I do, I can reach out to you, I.
Well, thank you, council, and thank you, Brian. And we're going to transition here to the uh federal side of our priorities. So thank you again, Brian. So joining us is David Hodges from CFM Advocates, and uh David, very much like Brian, is going to go over our draft twenty twenty four federal priorities and also give a little background and context to what to expect um at the federal level here in twenty twenty four. So thank you, Brian, or thank you, David.
No worries. Thanks, Shannon, appreciate that. I'm going to try to share my screen here. Hopefully this will work. Assuming you all can see that now.
Thank you, David.
Awesome. Uh, so as Shannon mentioned, I'm David Hodges with CFM Advocates. Uh, we represent uh the city of Lacey out in DC and um me, along with my colleague Joel Rubin, um who wishes he could have been here this evening, but had a scheduling conflict, unfortunately, so um could not make it. Um, he's out in DC too, so three hours ahead. This is a a little late for him. Um, I'm actually based in the state, so don't let the background fool you. I always say I'm uh I am here in Washington State. Um, so as Shannon mentioned, here to give an update on um all federal advocacy. Um, want to talk about some of your recent successes, give a quick uh DC update um and then get into your twenty twenty four federal agenda that we've been working with staff on. Um, and Mike, Brian, um, you know, hope this is more conversational, so feel free to uh ask questions throughout the presentation or save them for the end, um whatever uh works best for you all. So, starting with the recent suggestions, um, I personally am very excited to be able to talk about um congressional funding again. Uh, this is the process of um our members of Congress inserting language into an annual appropriations bill to direct funding to a specific project. Um, so uh it's a uh a practice that went away for about ten years, um and now it's back after three years. They've limited who is actually eligible for it, only local governments and nonprofits can now. But it just gives us another tool in our toolbox to access federal funding, where instead of going through the grant process, we are actually going through um, uh, you know, making an appeal to our members of Congress who are more familiar with the communities and their needs, um versus having a bureaucrat back in DC, which is kind of the usual federal grant process, make those decisions. Um, so had a lot of success on that. Um, can see Veterans Hub, five hundred thousand dollars for that to do some accessibility improvements there. Um, that was from Congresswoman Strickland um and Senator Cantwell. Um, Makerspace Expansion, and um I'll come back to that too in a second here, but that was just to expand the footprint of the Makerspace. Um, and and we have this pending one, and the reason I have it in yellow is because it's pending, and I'll talk a little bit about, you know, kind of where that sits right now a little bit later in the presentation. Um, switching over to uh federal grants, so mentioning the Makerspace again. Um, you received a million dollar EDA um grant for the Makerspace that was for some new state-of-the-art equipment to go in there. Um, we took that grant and made the case to the congressional delegation that you also needed in earmark um to be able to um actually, you know, expand the footprint of the Makerspace and make all that equipment go in. Um, so it's a really good story there. Um, Makerspace has been very popular with the congressional delegation. Um, the next item up on there, Safe Streets for All. Um, this is a new federal grant program that was created because of the bipartisan infrastructure law, and it's actually a pretty exciting program, because it's it's two-tiered in a sense, so they will give you funding, you can apply for funding for planning dollars, um, which helps. Um, which helps a community put together a um, Vision Zero Plan, they sometimes call it, but a safety plan basically for your. Um, your facilities. Um, and once you have that plan together, you can actually go and apply for implementation funding. So ideally, this plan will list the different projects that would increase safety in your community on your roads. Um, and then you're able to, you know, actually take that plan and apply for federal funds to implement it. So the city received sixty eight thousand dollars. Um, I think that was last year, if I'm remembering right. Um, to go ahead and complete that safety plan and then that'll open the door to additional funding that bipartisan infrastructure law is part of this program. Um, on the legislative front, uh, you know, just want to mention some big ticket items that uh, came in the first two years. Of uh, the Biden administration, uh, the American Rescue Plan. Uh, that provided six point eight million in flexible funding to the city. There was local government relief in there related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, of course, the bipartisan infrastructure law, which I just mentioned. Um, the Inflation Reduction Act, similarly, um, like the bipartisan infrastructure law created a lot of new grant programs, a lot of new tax credits. Related to green infrastructure and those sorts of investments that local governments can make um, as they start to address climate change. Um, and one thing that is exciting about that too is if you have an adopted climate action plan, it opens the door to that type of funding. Um, to be able to access it and that inflation reduction funds are still rolling out like the bipartisan infrastructure law. Um, we're starting to see a lot of new programs come online. Um, certainly within the next, early in the next year, there's going to be a lot of the tax credits coming online as well. Um, and then the last item on there, Puget Sound SOS Act. Um, this was something that was championed by former Congressman Heck. Uh, Congresswoman Strickland uh, took it up and it passed last year. And this um, creates an office for Puget Sound within the EPA and just brings a lot of um, additional federal resources to clean up efforts related to um, the Puget Sound. Um, so this is sort of just a quick hit on some of the recent successes over again, focusing on just the last uh, two to three years here. Um, but you know, we're always looking to build on that and um, definitely uh, feel good about uh, some of the wins we brought back for the city. So I want to transition a little bit um, to talk about what's going on in DC, which is always uh, interesting this time of year. Um, Congress finds themselves in the last two months of the year, as they often do. Um, with a very full plate um, of things that they need to complete. So just to give you a big picture, helps set the stage here. Um. House majority dysfunction, you know, I think if you've been following the national news, you probably have some good sense of that. Um. You know, it's been a very challenging uh, to govern um, over in the House of Representatives. And part of this goes back to the twenty twenty two election. Um, you know, when we went into it. Conventional wisdom, I think most of the pundits thought that um, the Republicans would have a very good night. Um, and ended up picking up a number of seats in the House of Representatives flipping the majority. They did flip the majority. Um, but instead of having twenty to thirty seats in the majority, they ended up um, with something uh, in the four to five range. Um, which, you know, can make it, it made it challenging definitely. Um, and you saw um. You know, the caucus has had some infighting that um, you know, largely was uh, under the radar to some extent. But um, when you, you know, when they're in the majority, they um, they had um. Uh, you know, those kind of came wide open. So it's, the tone was set in early January when Kevin McCarthy was going for the speakership. Um, you know, traditionally, when a speaker is nominated by one of the major caucuses. Um, it's fought out behind closed doors and goes to the floor. And then they um, you know, unanimously vote for that speaker, whoever the majority party is. Um, that was not the case this time around. There were very um, passionate feelings about Mr. McCarthy. Um, and ended up taking him fifteen rounds before he was actually able to secure the speakership. Um, he ended up having to make a number of concessions um, in order to do that. Um, but he, you know, he secured the speakership, um, which ended up being fairly short-lived. Um, so October rolled around, um, and then. Um, a small group, um, well, uh, one of his members introduced something called a motion to vacate. Um, this was a concession that he had made in early January. Um, that basically allowed any single member of the House of Representatives to bring forward. Uh, a motion to vacate, um, that the House would then have to vote on. And it just took a simple majority to boot him from the speakership. So um, all of the congress, all of the House Democrats supported that. Um, not surprising. I mean, the House, the way they operate, it's always very partisan. Um, and they were joined by uh, eight Republican members um, that gave that motion a um, majority. And Kevin McCarthy's speakership ended right there, which threw it into um, you know, three weeks of uh. You know, I, lack of a better word, we'll call it chaos. Um, there were three uh, different candidates that came forward uh, to try to become speaker. Um, they ultimately, you know, they, they got the votes they needed on the, behind closed doors with the caucus. Um, you know, some of them tried to take it to the floor, others did not, knowing that they wouldn't end up securing it. Um, so this is how we ended up with um, you know, a uh, relatively unknown on the national stage, I would say. But four-term congressman from Louisiana, Mike Johnson, um, fairly well-liked on both sides of the aisle on a personal level. Um, probably helped him secure the votes that he needed. Uh, so he's now uh, just wrapping up his second full week as Speaker of the House. Um, and you know, coming in with um. A lot of the same challenges Kevin McCarthy faced and trying to, trying to navigate that. Um, and you know. On top of everything else that Congress has to do in these last couple of months here, um, we have some foreign aid packages that. Um, they are trying to move through, um, that the speaker is trying to navigate that as best as he can, I would say. Um, but it's uh, gonna be very challenging um, to have that on his plate and top of trying to deal with appropriations. So um, on the appropriation side, um. You know, again, the challenges I talked about with majority dysfunction and foreign aid, those are sort of novel issues that come up. That it came up this year, towards the end of this year, but nuts and bolts things like um, appropriations is something that they have to do. Um, every year and they traditionally wait until um, the very last couple of months to actually, you know, pass an appropriations bill. So um, not surprising, this is often the case. Uh, Congress failed to pass an FY twenty four appropriations bill. Um, by the beginning of this fiscal year, which was on, uh, started on October first. So they passed what's called a continuing resolution, which basically just extends funding out to give them more time to complete the FY twenty four appropriations process. Um. That current continuing resolution expires on November seventeenth, which is coming up here next week. Um, there is, it's a very fluid situation, I would say. I think uh. Strategy has been, um, you know, both Senate and House are pursuing different strategies. Not entirely clear at this point, um, what the path forward is, but the bottom line is we're facing a shutdown on November seventeenth. Um, the FY twenty four appropriations packages will not be complete by then. There's just no way, there's not enough time to do that. So they're gonna have to do another continuing resolution to push it out further in order to complete their FY twenty four appropriations process. Um, or they would face the government shutdown. So, um. You know, moving FY twenty four appropriations is going to be challenging, so let me take you back a little bit to May of this year. Um, there was a deal on the debt ceiling. So they agreed to raise the debt ceiling through next year's um, presidential election. And in exchange, um, both sides agreed to top-line numbers for FY twenty four appropriations. So at the time, there was thought that since they agreed to those top-line numbers, that they would both write their appropriations, both chambers would write their appropriations bills at those levels, which would smooth things over. Um, and we may not end up with sort of this um, in some ways manufactured crisis at the end of the year. Um, well, when that deal passed to raise the debt ceiling, um, there was a small group uh, in the House. Um, that was very upset about this and, you know, partially led to um, Kevin McCarthy losing his speakership. Um, that said, no, actually, you know, we wanna, we want further cuts than what was agreed to in these levels. So um, that led Kevin McCarthy to directly appropriations committees to write their appropriations bills. Um, at significantly lower levels than what was agreed to in the debt ceiling deal. Meanwhile, the Senate proceeded to um, craft their appropriations bills and what was contained in that debt ceiling deal. So now you have them both trying to complete their, you know, appropriations packages, pass them out. Of their respective chambers and then they would go to conference and they'd have to work out the differences. Instead of thinking they'd come in with, you know, roughly the same top-line numbers um, and just have to hash out a few differences. They're gonna end up being billions of dollars apart. Um, and they're gonna have to navigate that and um. You know, from the Senate perspective, um, just strictly talking Senate and it's, it's interesting dynamic too, because it's not even necessarily partisan, you know, Senate is. Definitely controlled by the Democrats, um, but they have moved their appropriations bills in a very bipartisan fashion. Um, the vast majority of senators have voted for these appropriations bills at this level. So they're coming in. Um, you know, thinking that, hey, this is what we agreed to back in May. Meanwhile, it seems like the House is probably gonna want to come in. And reopen negotiations um, about further cuts and um, that can be a hard hand to play. Um, and it's gonna be very interesting to see how it plays out. Obviously, um, we're keeping close tabs on it. For the city, um, you know, generally want to see the government um, stay open. Um, you know, that's um, generally a good thing, I think. Um, but also for your earmark funding, um, you know, that is riding on FY twenty four appropriations. Um, so the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for College Street um, depends on Congress being able to pass an FY twenty four appropriations bill. Now, what happens if they don't pass an FY twenty four appropriations bill? You have to have some sort of a funding, you know, otherwise the government just stays shut down. So there is talk that they could do some sort of a year-long continuing resolution instead of this temporary, you know, where they add a few weeks at a time. Um, there's chatter that, you know, perhaps they um, move to a year-long continuing resolution. Um, and just forget FY twenty four appropriations. I think that's incredibly unlikely, frankly. I think there's a lot of incentive um, to complete the FY twenty four appropriations bill. Um, the devil's gonna be in the details. I mean, they need to work out um. Uh, those differences and it's again, as we often find ourselves here in the last couple of months of the year in Congress. Um, this hurried rush of activity as they try to starve off a shutdown and um, you know, complete the work that they need to do. Um, appropriations, I just want to very quickly mention legislation too, that is sort of in the mix here with everything. Um, Congress needs to, for both of these, the farm bill and FAA reauthorization, they have to reauthorize those programs every five years. So the farm bill governs everything from farm subsidies, but also um, uh, social services programs like SNAP and WIC. Um, and then FAA reauthorization, everything to do with the Federal Aviation Administration. So if you're jumping on a plane anytime soon. Um, definitely want to see FAA reauthorization happen. Um. And you know, again, that's, those two um, pieces of legislation are likely to hitch a ride on either an FY twenty four appropriations. Um, larger package or a continuing resolution. Um, so bottom line, you know, no shortage of challenges. Um, and you know, like I said, it's almost always a flurry of activity. Uh, this time of year as they try to wrap things up and um, you know, navigate the complex politics around these issues. And with that DC update, I want to transition to your twenty twenty four federal agenda. Um, and just see if there are any questions before I move into this. Awesome. Um, so some of these items probably look familiar. They were also appear on your state agenda, so um, up at the top there. Um, and I should add, we, so we um, you know, we're wrapping up um, sort of the twenty twenty three work, as I mentioned, as I just laid out. Um, trying to get all that wrapped up and then um, simultaneously have been working with staff to um, update your twenty twenty four federal agenda, which is what this is. So talking about funding priorities first, um, emergency coordination center. Um, so I, I noticed that was on your state agenda too. Um, so we're uh, seeking equipment um, to uh, outfit the emergency operations center as part of the police department. There's some uh, grant programs related to that on the federal side and also earmark opportunities to help with the equipment. Um, I just want to add that we um, made a strategic decision not to seek um, capital funding for this specifically. And the reason being is, um, and I'll talk a little bit more about this when I get down to policy priorities, but build America by America requirements. Um, can be very cumbersome, um, and can uh, in some cases, double the cost of materials. Um, for construction projects, so it, for small to medium-sized cities, um, it doesn't quite make sense necessarily to go for um, federal funding for a physical building. Um, but luckily, there are definitely programs that can help with um, getting some state-of-the-art equipment for your emergency coordination center. Uh, the College Street Safety Improvement Project, this is something we've had um, on your agenda for a while. Um, this is the third year we will be seeking a RACE grant. Um, this is a very popular US DOT program. Um, that received a big augmentation uh, in their funding, uh, this uh, through the bipartisan infrastructure law. Um, as I mentioned, very competitive, very popular program. It typically takes three to four rounds. Um, before uh, applicants are successful and every, every time you apply, you get a debrief with the US DOT and you improve it. Um, every time, uh, you know, every debrief that you have. We had an opportunity uh, with the deputy mayor and city manager to meet with US DOT a couple of weeks ago in DC, talk about this project. Um, and again, they really encouraged us, you know, listen to the debrief um, that you get and um. You know, you should be in good shape. So we're hopeful this year that we'll be able to do that. Um, and simultaneously with this too, we have the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar congressional earmark. Um, that I am looking at as somewhat of a down payment um, on this particular uh, project. Uh, the I five corridor, Mounds Road, Tom Water and Esqually River Delta. Uh, we know there's gonna be a big federal ask for that at some point. We have been talking uh, with the help of Shannon. Uh, with some of the other lobbyists and uh, other local entities um, about making sure that our messaging on this is aligned. So that when there is a big federal ask for this, um, we um, are all singing from the same sheet of music. And making the same request and we all have an understanding of it and there's, you know, again, showing that regional support for it. Um, and then future projects, you know, we, Brian mentioned this too on the state agenda, um, help build awareness uh, for long-range projects. Um, allows us to talk about it and if an opportunity presents itself, you know, of course, we're gonna take it. Um, at the top of that list is Young Child and Family Center. Um, so the deputy mayor and city manager were out, they had mentioned, uh, you know, we met with DOD about a potential funding source on this through the D SIP program. Um, and certainly uh, looking very positive that this uh, will compete. Um, the question is the timing of it and we're leaving it on future for now, because it's likely that we're gonna miss this application window this coming year, just given when. Uh, the school district is intending to go out for a bond vote. Feds typically want to be the last dollar in. Um, so we want to make sure that, you know, financing on that is lined up before we see federal funds. Um, as a two items, um, oh, I'm sorry, was there a question?
Negative.
Yep, yep. Uh, and then future needs, uh, yeah, museum and cultural center in Depot District. Um, again, if there's an opportunity that presents itself, we're gonna pounce on that and then uh, regional animal services as well, which I. Uh, took note, also appears on your state agenda. Uh, for policy priorities, um, I heard a little bit of chatter about the D SIP program, Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot. Uh, and this is related to Brian's state work, uh, the Defense Community uh, compatibility account. Um, definitely keeping close tabs on this. Um, so as I mentioned, uh, D SIP can help uh, fund the Young Child and Family Center and we had a really positive meeting uh, out in DC with those folks. Um, but I'm also, you know, the, I definitely the family center, but this could also be helpful for other infrastructure priorities. Um, in the community in the future, and that's one thing that we're advocating for. Uh, with the congressional delegation, particularly Senator Murray is the chairwoman of the uh, Senate Appropriations Committee. That this program has continued to be funded, um, and I would even say funded at robust levels. Um, just to make sure that it continues, um, because if it's not appropriated, uh, there's no opportunities to uh, go for funding for that. Uh, build America by America, as I mentioned, um, you know, we talk about it as being supportive of that. But some of the challenges with adhering to that makes it harder to go after federal funds. Um, if you have to do a strict adherence to build America by America can dramatically increase cost. Um, burdensome paperwork, et cetera. Um, so we just, you know, we want to make sure that we're highlighting that for the congressional offices. Um, National Housing Strategy and Home Strategy, this is a carryforward from the last couple of years. And again, just highlighting for the congressional offices, the burden that local governments and the states are really facing um, around a housing strategy and. Homelessness and the need for um, some sort of national strategy around that. Uh, support for community programs, so this is community development block grants and the COPS program, which helps law enforcement. Um, this is something we're always asking for, um, just again, making sure that it's uh, robust funding and um. Uh, funded every single year. Support for the Helper Act, um, this is a new addition. I think this was on here last year, but it's on here again. So this is a uh. Support for the Helper Act, um, this is a new addition. I think this was on here last year, but it's on here again. So this is a uh program that. Um, so helper stands for, I have to write this down, homes for every local protector educator and responder. Um, so it's setting up a new uh program for uh first responders that are first time home buyers. Um, you know, no down payments, no monthly uh mortgage insurance, um, things of that nature. Uh, to try to make it more affordable for those folks to uh live in the communities that they are actually serving in. Um, that bill, again, it has ninety three cosponsors in the House, thirteen cosponsors in the Senate. Um, I expect that it will go um eventually, but um, you know, as I mentioned, some of the challenges facing Congress right now, it may not be this year. Um, but definitely uh continuing to lend our support on that one. Um, and let's see with that. Definitely want to open it up to questions. That's the conclusion of my formal presentation, but of course, uh, happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Councilmember, best goes.
Uh, just one question. I think we talked briefly about the Helper Act last year. And we had some questions about the definitions of public servants that are included in like the potential benefit of that act. Has there been any work on like who the helper act is for?
Yeah, and I have a list here. Yeah, so it's first, so first responders was very broad. I don't have it in front of me, but it was a very broad definition. Um, so paramedics, firefighters, police officers, I think teachers were even in there. Um, and I'd be happy to follow up with that actual list. I need to go back and look at the actual legislation if that's all right. Just don't have it on the top of my head.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yep, absolutely.
David, would you mind stopping your screen share?
I'm literally trying to figure out how to do that right now. If anyone, uh, there we go.
Insurance is a bold strategy, David. I don't know how that's. I, I think I discussed that before, uh, but most. Products that have anywhere over eighty percent L T V are going to have to require some kind of. Underwritten mortgage insurance, but if, if they're waiving it. Um, that's pretty incredible. Is that be a really great help to, to a lot of people and.
Yeah, it's a really, you know, when you have ninety three cosponsors in the House, that tells you that it's, yeah, um, a good program, very popular. And yeah, like I said, I wish I had the list of. Um, who was considered a first responder on that, but happy to follow up with Shannon and let her forward it on.
All right, well, good enough. Does anybody else have any, anything further for the good of the order? No? Okay, all right, well, um, have we reached the end of our agenda? Sometimes I ask because I, I know I've jumped ahead in the past. It looks like, uh.
Yep, see you guys later.
Thank you. All right, well, good evening, uh, deputy mayor and council. I've got one final item uh for you all tonight. And that is to go over a draft council policies and procedure manual update that includes uh no committees as well as a few other updates that I just want to walk you. Through and answer any questions I can, and get some general feedback on uh the draft as presented. So the point of uh tonight again is just to review only and to get some direction from the council on the proposed uh draft. Uh, the council has been talking about this item of, you know, uh, removing committees or eliminating committees and changing council dates from Thursdays to Tuesdays. Uh, we've talked about it most recently at the uh city council work session on September twenty eighth. Um, and at that meeting, the council directed staff to proceed with uh eliminating meetings and changing meeting dates. And in order to do that, we would need to take two steps. The council would need to take two steps. And the first would be a resolution that would modify the city council policies and procedure manual to remove references to committee meetings. And so that's what we're here tonight to review. This would tentatively, uh, pending on feedback from the council, come back before the council for approval on December seventh. Uh, on the same date on December seventh, the second item would also be an ordinance before the council. And this would be modifying city council meetings uh from Thursdays to Tuesdays. So just a little background on the council policies and procedures manual itself. So it was adopted by the council on uh June ninth, two thousand and eleven, and this was really to standardize the process. Uh, for what the council practices, uh, what your procedures are and what your policies are. Uh, the last comprehensive poli- uh, update to this policy itself occurred back in uh July of twenty twenty one. And so when we took a look at removing committees, we thought this would be a good opportunity to also just take a look at and uh some other items that might need to be updated. And I certainly don't think um I got them all, or uh there's some, so really probably room for a lot of other additions as well. And on that note, um, I, I took a look at it on earlier this week after not having looked at it for a couple of days. And I found some additional uh edits, and so I would uh like to bring that back to council too when we take a look at it at a future date. But really the updates just broadly, and we'll get into more detail, what they do is they remove uh committees and change dates uh of meetings to Tuesdays. They also update a lot of practices to reflect what is currently going on. Um, and again, this was a, a, a manual that was created in two thousand and eleven, and some of the practices have changed over time. It also increases um just some efficiencies in some of the sections, as well as increases administrative flexibility for non-policy items. Um, so in your pocket tonight, you'll see attachment one, which just gives you a clean copy with all of the updates. And then attachment two is a redline copy with all of the actual edits and changes. Uh, the edits and changes that are not showing are formatting, and the reason for that is because that would be a very, very long document if we included formatting changes. So just a, a review of the major updates and please feel free to uh i- interrupt and ask any questions about the changes, but like I mentioned, throughout the entire document, and this was in several chapters. There were references to committee meetings, and so we eliminated all of those references. And um made it so it was uh tied to just the full city council rather than a particular committee. Uh, chapter seven was the one place where we found references to Thursdays, since we updated those um meeting times of the council to Tuesdays. Uh, we also updated some of the language just to be more inclusive, and I provided the example here in the staff report, although there's um certainly uh other elements as well, where we replaced. References to citizens, to community members, to reflect that um. Uh, you all represent broader than just people who live here in the city of Lacey. I'll give the example of business owners who might not live here in Lacey. Uh, people, you know, commonly who live in the urban growth area where programming and services are provided. And so uh we just expanded that to community members. And that was throughout the entire document. Uh, in chapter two and chapter seven, we also provided a definition, um, not only for excused, but also unexcused or absence. Uh, absent, just to add clarity for attendance, and this was for council meetings. This was also for advisory boards, uh, to provide a little bit more definition there. Um, some additional edits, uh, in section two fourteen and two fifteen, we updated the advisory board and commission's recruitment process and appointment process to reflect the existing practice. Uh, there was a kind of a previous flow of what was going on uh with the recruitment, and so we thought we would update it to what is currently the practice of the council. Uh, we also removed in those same sections, references to the T C more, uh, T C media board of directors. And throughout the entire document, we updated all of the references to our new city website and all of the appropriate links that are associated with them. Um, previous editions still had references to some of our older web pages. Um, we updated section two sixteen for the Lacey Youth Council to increase program flexibility, also reflect the current practice and uh the current meeting time changes. So um it was very prescriptive on some of the processes and what we have found is based on. Uh, the year and the students, we'd like a little bit more flexibility and how youth council is run and operated. And also when they meet. So as an example, um, because council was meeting on Thursday, they were also meeting on Thursday, and now that council is. Uh, tentatively meeting on Tuesdays, they needed to have their uh policies updated as well. And so. Uh, just tried to make it a little bit more flexible for staff to implement uh the Lacey Youth Council. Um, we also included uh an edit to section of chapter five, uh, point zero six, which removes the section requesting council resolution on public issues. Uh, what we found is that resolutions are typically requested by other local governments. Um, and that the community members could always express that a council consider a resolution through a public comment process. Uh, or they could also request a proclamation through the public requests for proclamation process. So this would um. Just eliminate that process for the public. However, you know, certainly there could be other mechanisms outside of a uh form that they fill out to request. Uh, a, a resolution or uh continuing the practice of allowing for requests for pub- public proclamations. Uh, the update includes an update to section uh five zero seven, which uh updates council proclamations to allow for organization-led proclamations as well as public proclamations. So again, requests from individuals, but also uh requests, uh, maybe that uh originate from the city. Um, so for example, um, a uh, an item of this could be um, Lacey loves to read if that was starting with staff and has continued through staff throughout time, just to give us greater flexibility for how proclamations come in. Um, section five point eleven, update social media, and um the big change really here is to include, I know we had a. Uh, really good training with Jeff Myers recently on public records and social media was brought up several times during that discussion. And so really, we just wanted to include some language in there, um, that if there are sites. Um, that are being used by council members for city business, um, that we can request capturing it on our city-approved archiving system, so that way. We can include any public records that might be created through that process. So I'll use an example. This isn't for private sites. This is sites that are used expressly for city council business. And not somebody's individual uh Facebook site as an example. Um, section uh seven uh, seven includes updating the agenda timeline to provide the city manager with discretion to set timelines for agenda packet materials. Uh, currently, as it's um prescribed, it's very prescriptive on when items will be moving forward in this process. And since we are changing dates. Um, and uh the city manager can, gives the city manager a flexibility to kind of create a new system and figure out what flow works for. Uh, creating agendas, creating agenda packets and getting them out to council as we transition. I stopped my sharing abruptly. Um, we updated some, have some draft updates to section seven, seven, um, also on the order of business. Um, and it's some references to the regular and work session meetings to include adding the land acknowledgement as we've been practicing.
One question actually goes back to the screen.
Absolutely.
Assuming it's still your intention that we'll have our packets at least a week before the meeting.
You got to map out what that looks like and.
Sure, no, I get that. You got to re- restructure things, but yeah, it's. Well, because I think we need that.
Yeah.
Obviously.
And then council member previously, it was, you know, it provi- it provided a list of every kind of detail and step prior to the packet getting to the council. And so we just wanted to build in a little bit more flexibility for that process.
Completely agree.
Um, in that same section, updated the order of business, um, and so again, adding the land acknowledgements and also taking an opportunity to take a look at the flow of the uh, uh, order of business. Uh, what we did was we were proposing to bring proclamations following public recognition. So it would go public recognitions, proclamations, and then public comments. Um, we've found several times that individuals who are accepting proclamations will sit here through uh public hearings as an example for a long period of time. Um, and so this really just kind of up, uh, expedites that, that public process and allows us to get through presentations, proclamations and public comment upfront. What we're also proposing is removing the reference to referrals from the planning commission within the agenda itself, as these are often. Uh, resolutions or ordinances, and so they would still come before the council as referrals from the planning commission, however they would come under the item. Uh, the vehicle which was being used, so whether it was the ordinance or a resolution. And this is um consistent with the other recommendations of the other advisory boards. So planning commission was the one advisory board that was carved out distinctly. In the uh council's order of business. Um, so other advisory boards bring up items in front of the council as well with recommendations. And again, they typically will come under. Um, a resolution and ordinance or a city manager's report. Um, staying with that same section, uh, it also expands the purpose of the city manager's reports. Again, just to allow uh a little bit of flexibility with some presentations in the city manager's report. Um, and then it updates other, um, you know, practices uh to be more contemporary. And I just wanted to point out. Uh, one of these as an example of um there being a printer and fax machine in the council workroom. I don't think there are either of those items in the council workroom unless uh one of you can confirm that. And. Yeah, and so the idea would be just to provide um. Flexibility for those technologies to not be there. So there are some items that um. I think been here throughout time that we just wanted to clean out some of the references.
We still want some fax, so we can get one in there.
Okay. And so the way it, it now reads in many sections, and this is just an example of kind of tech, tech related, right? So we're not calling specifically out what the tech is. Being a little bit broader, so we don't have to update the policy manual every time there's a change in technology. Um, and as I mentioned, a few additional minor edits pending, which I intend to bring back uh before the council and just go do an overview of uh that I caught after uh. I submitted this for the packet. Um, so with that, uh, be willing to answer any questions or go over any sections that the council has concerns with.
It's a lot there. I. I wasn't sure at first, you know, like I, and I know that like all the other cities and jurisdictions meet on Tuesdays. Whenever there's something on Tuesday or on Thursday. You're not able to go or attend or, um, but I. I, I was, I was, I was really unsure about, you know, removing. Um, all the, the, the committees altogether. I was kind of. At first, I was not necessarily in favor of that move, um, and partially because. There's a good learning ground there for, for um, for new council members. Um, there's, is uh good guidance and good, you know, um, civic learning for, you know, all the different things that happen within the city. So, you know, you. You're new, you get on a committee, you know, you start learning about transportation, utilities, uh, finance, general government and these types of things. And I, I. I was, I was apprehensive about, you know, removing. That tutelage from anybody who joins this council. Um, uh, and then we start talking about how, you know, those things would be brought to work session, they would be brought in front of the entire council. Um, as a work session in that, in that. The, the, the work session wouldn't. You know, go till ten, eleven o'clock at night, we would still be able to remake, keep time manageable. Um, you know, during, during the work session, even with these additional items, because the, the redundancy would, would come down to its minimum level that it needs to be at. So it actually took me a couple of weeks to, to become in favor. Of this, because at first I was not, even though the rest of the council was, I was like, I, I don't like it. That was my initial knee jerk response, you know, because we started talking about this in June. So when it, well, March.
July.
Yeah, we had all of us went in and into the hot box with Shannon and sat there and got grilled. I'm just kidding.
So say, I hope, I hope it wasn't that long. Grilled would not be the term I would strive.
Curriants, I don't know.
But for some of us, you know, the, the method that we've have is, is all that we know. Or have known, uh, there hasn't been another method that um, that we've used to, to. Get city business for.
Really long time.
Yeah, from, from staff to council. So I'm, I'm still warming up to it.
End up questioning.
Yeah.
I li- I like that. Interviews would be, maybe better.
Yeah, they were interviews. There was candy, there was a bowl of candy, there was beverages, it was nice. Does anybody else have anything on, on this early?
Unlike you, I was for it from the beginning. I didn't have any like questions about it. It just seemed like a good idea. Um, because I do think that. It is going to simplify things for me personally and participating and being able to engage with the content, because. Meetings in the middle of the day when I have a nine to five job are very difficult. So I think shifting this way is going to help me. But I'm also glad that we use it as an opportunity to just modernize the book, very modernize some of the rules around like not referencing a fax machine. So. I'm glad that we took the time to update this in a bunch of other ways. And it's going to be more convenient if we can participate in some of the events that happen across the community on Thursdays. Because I do feel like we get left out sometimes.
We do. But I think it's more streamlined and innovative and that unity is more welcome because it's. Very, very more feasible hours for. All the reasons you've, you've heard, but I mean, people are more accessible when they're not at work. And you're bringing this to the full council with all the corrections, December?
Yeah, so December seventh is what is tentatively scheduled for. And again, we'd bring um a redline copy of all of the corrections and edits and additions, the ones you saw had reviewed. Um, a few more uh for you to take a look at, but that would be included um on the December seventh meeting.
And we would start this January, so January one, starting in January, meetings will be on Tuesday. And we would start this January, so January one, starting in January, meetings will be on Tuesday and no committee meetings starting.
January second.
January second would be the first meeting.
That's the first meeting. It's Friday, Tuesday.
Perfect.
Well, it looks like we, we agree on that. We. An interesting schedule change. Took a lot of work, Shannon. Okay, well, uh. If, uh. If that's all we have for today, then. Yes, we will, uh, call this meeting adjourned. Thank you guys all for being here. Everybody have a good night.